councillor on Hooper councillor for the West Ecclesfield Ward.
councillor Rob Rice councillor for the East Ecclesfield Ward.
councillor Janet Ridley Labour councillor for Stockspurjina Padon and also deputy chair of this committee.
councillor Tony Downing member for Mossborough Ward.
councillor Karen McGowan member for Burley Ward.
councillor Antisam Mohammed Perth Park Ward but I'm substituting today.
Bernard Little councillor for Walkley Ward.
Marian Elliott Green councillor for Leeds Valley.
thank you, do we have any apologies?
we do Chair and that's councillor Denise Fox, thank you.
item two is the exclusion of the press and public, I believe there are no items on the agenda today that will require that. item three declarations of interest, do any members?
yeah I don't know if I'm supposed to declare an interest but I believe we've got a question from us about Burley Golf Course and that's in my ward but also I know the petitioner that's brought it in or the question in so I just thought I'd declare that.
thank you, that's fine, I advise that's fine. so is there any other declarations of interest from any of the members? okay minutes of the last meeting, item four, I'll go through it page by page, if you have a query please indicate. I'll take it the page numbers as in the overall agenda pack, so page 11, page 12, page 13, page 14, page 15 and the minutes as a whole. I'll take it as approved, thank you. due to time constraints I'm going to move the agenda around slightly and I'm going to go to item eight a revenue budget monitoring report by Tony.
thank you Chair, Tony Cocomintum director of finance and commercial services, apologies from Jane unfortunately not able to be here so you've got me as a bit of a last minute substitute so really appreciate you moving around the agenda for me. report in front of you is the outturn report for the council for 22/23 and what you will see is that that showed an overall overspend for the council of £5 million. that's a significant improvement on the month five position which we were anticipating in excess of £22 million I believe and we managed to show demonstrate progress month by month through over that period which has brought it down to an outturn position of £5 million which is a drawdown upon the council's reserves in addition to the £15 million which were previously planned. in relation to your committee we see an underspend in this area which I believe you were monitoring throughout last year so that should come as little surprise to you the outturn position being £1.6 million in rounded up terms in relation to the budget position. there are a couple of carryforwards in this area in relation to the team around person and in relation to the voluntary sector elements in relation to the youth development which you received previous year. so the report itself is for noting Chair but I'm happy to answer any questions.
thank you, do we have any questions for Tony? no, in that case thank you very much.
thank you.
recommendation is for approval, I will take silence as a unanimous, that is unanimously approved. we come back to item five which is the appointment to urgency subcommittee. the power to appoint members to the urgency subcommittee now sits with the policy committee therefore we ask to appoint Tony Downing to this subcommittee, we're also asking that you make give delegated authority to the monitoring officer in consultation with the relevant political group whip to make appointments to the subcommittee, is that agreed? that's agreed? that is resolved unanimously. item six is public questions and petitions, we do have one question today from the public. he is not here but I will take it and I will briefly summarise his question because there's quite a lot of detail in it but its premise is quite straightforward and I will read out an answer that's been prepared. the question is from a Mr David Cronshaw and basically what he's asking is his overall concern is that the price of golf for people under the age of 18 on our public courses is very high compared to other courses both municipal and private courses in and around the city and in other cities and therefore he's asking that as we are going through a leisure review in due course when we will be asking for feedback from local golfers and to see whether we can look at the cost of our golf across the city for youngsters. it's a way clearly which a lot of golf clubs do encourage young people to take up the game. I know it's something that private clubs do. in response my answer is as part of the tender exercise the council will require bidders to submit detailed information about their approach to pricing. this information will be reviewed and the council will discuss pricing proposals with bidders during the dialogue phase of procurement. bidders will be made aware that the council requires bids that encourage participation by young people and that their proposed pricing structures should support this. members of the council's sports and leisure team will arrange to meet with Mr Cronshaw and ensure that any feedback provided is considered fed into the dialogue process with bidders. I think that seems a reasonable approach, thank you. we shall now go to item seven which is the work programme.
thank you Chair. the work programme is set out from page 17 of the main agenda pack. on page 18 you will see a list of recommendations that we'll be asking the committee to agree. I do believe today that there is a specific item that we would like to raise to add to the work programme for September and Chair will talk about that in a moment. you will see if you leaf through further on in the work programme there's forthcoming items for future meetings and anything new or anything amended is in part one of appendix one at the top. so I will pass back to you Chair, if that's okay?
the item is about it's about to do with the cohesion strategy which will be Lorraine Wood is planning to bring to this committee in September. it's about making Sheffield a better place to live, it's about getting communities to work together basically to be kind to each other. getting on, getting along, getting involved and feeling safe. it will obviously encompass things like the hate board, the violence against women and children, urgent girls but it's certainly something that I believe we should be looking at as a committee, it certainly falls into our community's brief. and basically I'm asking you to agree that this should go on to our work programme going forward. I take silence as approval so yes we will go with that.
thank you Chair.
our next item is item nine which is tree diseases and their potential impact. there is a report to be brought forward.
Chair, sorry, I didn't realise we'd finished that, I just wanted to ask a question, is that all right about the previous topic? sorry it's only really quick, I noticed that we've got for future items is the Burrells cremations and I just wondered if we've got a timescale for when that will be brought to us because it just said future and I just wondered is that, I know you haven't put it on for this, is that right, thank you.
I anticipate us putting that on the agenda for the September meeting if that would be agreeable, we're recruiting additional resource to help us with that piece of work and so it would be good to bring an update to members in September. thank you.
okay we'll have the next item which is tree diseases. and could I ask the officers to introduce themselves when they speak please?
yeah good afternoon, my name's Gerry Guntson I'm a tree manager based in Parks and Countryside.
and I'm Ruth Bell head of Parks and Countryside.
so the report that I've brought along is entitled Tree Diseases and Their Potential Impact, it looks specifically at two diseases currently affecting our trees and woodlands and the impacts that they're having on resources. okay, we've got some slides.
technological issue.
anyway the first slide was going to show all the benefits that our trees provide to the city. Sheffield has an extensive tree cover creating one of the city's greatest natural assets. it makes our city a healthier and more attractive place to live and work and provides essential habitat for wildlife. trees and woodlands store over half a million tonnes of carbon which is helping to mitigate causes of climate change. each year it removes 374 tonnes of airborne pollutants and it intercepts over half a million cubic metres of water. now if you need any idea what that is, it's just over 200 Olympic swimming pools full. so it's really important that we manage this valuable asset. so around about 60% of the city's tree cover. yes and then one more. okay so it's really important that we manage this valuable asset. around 60% of the city's tree cover is on council land which is actually higher than most other cities in the country which are more 40% council 60% private. Parks and Countryside Service manage around 98% of the tree cover on council land, so we carry out tree inspections. we do forestry work, so we have some commercial forests where we harvest timber, do tree planting, a lot of community forestry and all of our work in our woodlands and plantations are all carried out to the FSC standard which is one of the highest standards you can get in terms of timber management and tree management. and we also provide advice to our colleagues, members and the public. next slide. now tree related pests and diseases are common so the two we're going to talk about today, I will come under that but most of them don't have a significant impact. basically they're all part of a woodland's natural life cycle. many of the diseases on this slide are ones that we see fairly regularly in our woodlands. and new trees grow up to take the place of the diseased trees. but every now and again certain diseases like Dutch elm disease come along and take out large numbers of a particular species or even of multiple species and that's the case with the two diseases that we're looking at today which are ash dieback and remorun disease. next slide. so ash dieback as you can see from the slide ash trees account for just over 6% of the city's tree cover which is around about 270,000 of them we have across the city. I think they're the fourth or fifth, the fifth most populous tree in the city. national guidance suggests that ash dieback will result in the loss of between 50 and 85% of these trees over the next 10 to 15 years. so we're looking at we could lose up to 137,000 trees on council land. next slide. as the diseased trees decline you can see some of the symptoms here, they die back from the top but as the trees decline they become brittle and start losing limbs and whole trees can fail. now this isn't an issue with most of our ash trees which are in woodlands where they can just fall to pieces without really affecting anybody. but a certain percentage of the trees on their property are beside roads or near places which are busy with people and these ones we're going to have to intervene to remove them safely before they collapse. and the initial danger will be to contractors who in many cases will have to climb the trees and because of the brittle nature it means there's a greater danger to them. okay next slide. so this is a bit of a graphic showing the costs that we expect over the next 10 to 15 years which are quite stark. we are at the third blue line on the left hand side at the moment in terms of this year. sorry the fourth blue line will be this year 2023/24. we're predicting a spend of about £320,000 this year on ash dieback alone. next year it will be close to £500,000 and the graph shows it just continues to rise for probably another five or six years before it starts to tail off. it may not be an exact graph like that, it may be more smoothed but that is the same result at the end, that's based on £7 million spend which is halfway between the £5 and the £9. yeah so all of that really is paid contractors to take trees down. so it's based on a national, the national guidance of £400 per tree and it's been incredibly accurate for the last three years and that's what we're spending. so there's nothing to doubt that these figures are wrong. there'll be other impacts from losing so many ash trees. whereas obviously the effect on the landscape of losing them and I think in terms of ash, the ones in the parks, the real stark ones so left hand picture there is Hillsborough Park and there's other big ash trees right in the middle of the park. it's got ash dieback, it's not reached the level where it needs to come out but it will need to come out probably in the next two or three years' time and that'll have a big impact on the park. they don't recover, no, no ash recover, as far as we're aware the disease has spread since the 1990s from Eastern Europe and it's gone through pretty much every country in Europe and so a lot of the information that we've got is based on what others have already been through. so there's no reason to doubt it's going to be different. there won't be such an impact on those in woodlands because we've got multiple species growing close together in woodland so there will be some impact on the ground flora but visually it probably won't be as stark. now we're not the only authority dealing with this, obviously every local authority is going to have ash trees and there was a survey of local authorities last year that found that 33% of local authorities expect to remove more than 5,000 ash trees in the next six to 10 years. that was the highest category that was allowed in the questionnaire or else we would have put something higher as would others. 35% of local authorities expect to spend over a million over the same period of time, again that was the highest bracket in the survey and 24% expect to spend over £10 million dealing with ash dieback which is slightly more than what we're anticipating. so it does show that everyone is in this together, as far as I'm aware there's no funding, no central government funding for ash dieback although there are grants for replanting which we're tapping into. so just to add more bad news, we anticipate a lot more pests and diseases impacting on our trees and woodlands estate. okay some are already in the country and slowly working their way up this way, others are on the continent and could come over quite easily. global trade has been one of the major factors in terms of this rapid increase in pests and diseases over the last 20 or 30 years. climate change is just exacerbating it because it's making our trees stressed and also creating perfectly hospitable environments for new diseases to thrive with the winters not being as cold. just to add one last thing, another 127 pest and diseases are considered high risk to the UK should they reach there, so that's what's sort of being watched. okay so the second disease which I'll just briefly touch on is remorun disease. this affects large trees which are mainly confined to our conifer plantations, so our commercial forests. Richard asked me to put this picture in. so this is Rush Stand Hills which was a large forest at the back of Wurlerbrook Hall and the forestry commission fly, they fly up and down the country looking for this disease, it's notifiable. so when they spot symptoms of it they send their inspectors in, as you can see in the other picture, who then come and test the trees and if it's confirmed then the forestry commission serve a statutory plant health notice on the landowner which gives them a limited amount of time in which to get rid of the trees, to take the trees down. so the impact really to us is not so much a health and safety issue in getting the trees down, it's more because of the statutory plant health notice, but there are impacts. so the impacts are that we'll have to do forestry works for these notices before we look at other forestry work that we would have done in that particular year. the process is a lot more extensive for dealing with diseased trees with the timber and so the income that we receive from the timber is a lot less. and I think we found with Rush Stand Hills we hardly made any income on that whereas we would have expected to make significant income. and a real key part to this is that a lot of the income that we get from our forestry works is used to fund the management of our ancient woodlands which we make very little money from, you know they're more of a sink in terms of funding. so it's a problem in that way, luckily we don't have huge numbers of large trees but there are rubber diseases which are waiting which could take out other parts of our commercial forestry estate, so next slide.
sorry Lisa, did you say is there any funding to deal with the statutory plant health notice? no, when we receive the notice we just have to go in and remove the tree and any surrounding trees and we receive no additional funding for that, we have to do it from our revenue budgets.
okay so the other impacts are plantations will remove earlier than planned so they may not be mature so we're going to again get less funding for it. the additional cost in processing and obviously the impact on the our woodland, okay and then the last slide. so how are we managing the situation, we're managing it in a number of ways, so ash dieback we're managing through a dedicated ash dieback plan. so we pulled this together in the first year but it started to affect us and it's based on national guidance. we're working closely with the tree council who are taking a national view on ash dieback. we're keeping in touch with other local authorities, what we've found is places like Devon and Norfolk are about three years ahead of us with this disease because it came across English Channel basically and worked its way up the country. so we can see from them how they're dealing with it and what's to come for us. we're replacing trees for our community forestry programme so we plant around about 10,000 trees a year to cover that. providing regular updates to senior management so we take a report to place leadership team every year to give an update and developing forest resilience, so this is looking at species that are most likely to survive both climate change and the potential threat in terms of pests and diseases. and we're just getting the message out through tree related events, media articles, site notices and briefing sessions like this.
so we wanted to bring this to you because it's just one of the many challenges that we're facing. it's something that we have no choice but to deal with whether it be the ash dieback or the remorun or any other disease that we have to deal with in the city and Gerry and his team have to just get in there and deal with it as quickly as they can, as safely as they can. and in dealing with it as safely as they can, costs are quite high because of that. so we in Parks and Countryside have to offset that spend in another way, so we either have to make reductions in what we do elsewhere or do things differently across our entire Parks and Countryside network, so we just wanted you to just to be aware of one of these things that's been going on for a number of years and that we're having to deal with year on year. and you saw the graph that we sometimes refer to as the graph of doom, when it reaches its highest point in fact several years before that, it is more money than Parks and Countryside has to deal with all of the sites that we have across the city. so it is really important that people understand what it is that we're facing in in our parks, in our green spaces and across the city and we're not the only ones, obviously there are private landowners dealing with this as well so.
thank you, interesting but slightly depressing report. yeah but I think, I think we all agree the scale of it is quite dramatic. I'm sure some of you will have been aware of it, I knew a little about it, I mean the picture that Gerry referred to I saw that in the flesh so to speak and it was shocking, it looks worse in real life than it does in a picture. I've had Karen's asked a question, please questions now, so I'll take Karen first then Bernard then Rob and then Marian.
thank you, I've got several questions actually, really interesting so thank you for the information. is this policy, because we all know when it comes to land and where a tree is, is it on highways, is it on housing, is it on country, Parks and Countryside? so does this policy, is it one policy for all trees on whatever land they're on? so that's my first question. second one, you said how expensive it is, so why do we have to contract it out, is it not cheap, have we not got people within the council that can do this work? is it the same price whether it's one tree in a forest to 10 trees? because I'm thinking how long does it take to take a tree down, I don't know, this is my ignorance in this field. so could they take three or four trees down in a day and charge £400 per tree or just go and take one down? so there's those questions. the other thing is, has anyone raised this with government and asked for any money? I know they're not offering anything but you said about the numbers for Sheffield are quite high compared with other councils. so my suggestion would be could we write as a committee to government or something to ask for some funding because we're in a different position to other people? and then my last question sorry is about replanting, so when you've got a cleared land like that is it then not usable for trees, is the earth contaminated for a better word or can we replant, thank you.
okay so the first one.
is it the same policy across all land?
yes, okay so the policy is for Parks and Countryside, now we manage 98% of the trees, the only other trees are on the highway. so Amy within their contract will have their own policy of managing the 36,000 trees. yes we manage them for housing as well, yeah, yeah, so any tree off the highway but on council land is now within my team, so we do manage it all under the same policy. yeah I mean Amy are taking out ash trees as they come along in terms of, obviously their inspection processes are quite widespread really, they've got a small number of trees, quite a lot of inspectors so they see their trees all the time so they can monitor them closer than what we can. we still do an inspection programme for ash but it's harder given the scale.
your second question was about cost and why do we contract it out, we simply don't have the staff to do it. we have a lot of work and not enough staff and this is an extra burden. and it wouldn't be cheaper if we were bringing in staff full time on our, on our books to be, to be doing it. is it the same price whether it's one tree or many, roughly yes, they just go and deal with the trees as and where they are and it's a fairly consistent price. price. And we do use multiple contractors as well. This isn't a single contractor working in the city for us. There's a list of several contractors who are approved to work on council land and it's the same price.
I can probably add to that.
Go for it.
In terms of the £400, it's just an average price. So for some trees it'll only be £50 and others it'll be £1,000, depending on where it is and how complex and how big.
Have we asked the government for money? I think the answer to that is no, but we would welcome your writing as a committee, setting out the scale of the challenge in Sheffield and asking if there's any further support that can be given. And then replanting, I think Gerry can probably add to this, but is the earth contaminated? No, it isn't. It's not a problem and we do replant and where things fall in our woodlands, where we don't go in and intervene, actually things will just grow up on their own. We don't go and replant in those areas because we don't need to, because there's plenty in the soil, but it'll just make its way up if there's one fewer tree in the place.
Oh, Rush Stand, that has been replanted now. I could have added the slide in to show what it looks like today, but it's now just a whole sea of tree guards and we're planting it with native broadleaf woodland now. So it's changed from that plantation.
So your four questions answered. Great, thank you. I've got councillor Little.
Thank you for your presentation, disturbing, very disturbing. Several questions. One is about, if the experience, which, does it show that if they're left up and untreated and not taken down, they infect others? Is that the case?
Yeah, the disease spreads by spores and so most of the trees in Sheffield that are going to be infected are probably already infected, it's just they're not showing the symptoms. It's quite a slow disease, how it develops through the tree. So once we see the first symptoms, it can take three, four, five, up to 10 years for them to fully decline. But we only intervene and take the tree out once it's past 50% leaf loss, because that's where it's deemed a point of no return and also the trees become dangerous at that point, they start becoming brittle.
So where this is, it originates in Eastern Europe. So have there been any experience of, say, managing it so that they're, because of the sheer cost and danger of removing trees, that they're left alone to die? And I mean, they become then source for insects and, you know, homes for other creatures? Is there any, you know, way of looking at it slightly different ways so it wouldn't be, you know, a huge loss that it is, but actually ecological land, our ecological landscape changes over time anyway? Do you think a case may be made that, you know, that this is the case here?
I think we're already doing that. So as Gerry said, the trees that we're talking about taken out because of ash dieback are the ones where they need to be taken out for safety. If they're in our woodlands and they're not near a path and we're not concerned about them falling where people are going to be passing by and the like, we do leave them because they can just fall or break apart and absolutely, as you say, become something that species can invade and have a nice little home. But where there is a matter of public safety, no, we haven't considered that because we take trees down for safety. So we're taking them down because the point where we have to, because beyond that it may not be safe and we can't take that risk.
Thank you. My other two questions, one is about pocket plum disease. Are you aware of that? I've noticed it on the ponderosa in Upper Thorpe and it's affected virtually every single plum tree or its shrub on Parkwood Springs. I've notified the ex-ecologist of it, but is, are we concerned about it? I understand there's nothing can be done when a tree gets this disease. What happens is that the plum itself doesn't form a seed in the middle and it looks like, almost like a banana or an almond, but it doesn't recover. So, yeah, I just wonder if we're doing anything about it?
Yeah, it hasn't come to mind at all. Yeah, I don't think we have many plums in terms of being that we'd inspect and risk manage and things like that, but it's, I will look into it.
Thank you. And sorry, the last observation is, I spoke with a parkkeeper on Saturday on Parkwood Springs, who was up there with a Bowser watering trees. I understand Parks Department have only one Bowser for the whole city. Is that true? Is there anything we can do about it? Speaking to the officer, he said that in the past we've had extraction licences for water, so that, from downpipes, so that they don't have to go back to the depot each time and fill up, so they can use a local water source. It is, you know, what is being done, because, you know, the weather we're getting now puts saplings that have been planted particularly by local community groups will be really struggling. Are there any plans to address this?
Yeah, I mean, we did used to get a licence for, to be able to extract water from any water hydrants around the city. I'm not sure, it's part of my team, but it's an extended part of my team. So I'd need to ask the manager of the team in terms of what they're doing about the watering side of things. But we obviously only water when you do get long dry spells and it's mainly by heavy standards that we water, but the established trees that we put in as large trees rather than the smaller whips.
Yeah, I understand it's the first two years of when a sapling is planted that it needs regular watering in dry weather.
Molch them as well. So we are doing it at the moment, but I'd have to ask the community forestry manager.
Could we be updated on that?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's what it's the diseases, we're at also a critical point with climate change.
I shall go and have a look at the plum disease as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Rose. Thank you for the report, insightful. I'm thinking about what happens when we do remove the trees. Is there a current management programme for the biomass that we generate through it? Is there a way of make, kind of make it into a financial kind of area for the council? Or is it, or is that we burn it or we compost it? How are we dealing with it?
Okay, so most of the trees will be left where they fall, basically for biodiversity. So if we're taking trees down within woodland areas, we'll tend to leave everything on site. In other areas, the contractors will take away the timber, but they will reflect that in their cost. So when they price up for the work, they'll reduce their costs because they may know that they can make a certain amount of money from processing the timber and selling its logs.
And I've just got one unrelated to the first. You mentioned the replanting programme. Is that the contractors, the removal contractors, do they do it or is that counselling sourced?
That's through, so all the replanting is done by our community forestry team. So they get the community out and they all plant trees together with the local community.
And is there a published and independently audited programme to ensure that the, when we talk about the replanting, that the biodiversity in the areas that are affected is both either retained or improved compared to the prior and also reduces the impact of future diseases that might be beyond the horizon to ensure that we're not having to go through this programme or the costs again?
So we're working on a regional tree planting strategy with the other local authorities in South Yorkshire, which is currently being funded. So that will include all of this side of things. I mean, we are replacing the trees like for like. We can't replant ash with ash because they're not available and allowed to move ash around. But we are replanting the trees in terms of numbers.
Thank you. Look forward to reading the strategy you come up with.
Thank you, councillor. And, sorry, Lisa.
Lisa, first, director of Parks, leisure and libraries. I would just add as well that we do have a trees and woodland strategy and that is on the agenda for the committee to bring back review and refresh. It's five years in now and as part of that, there is a planting strategy within that, there's a planting strategy within the strategy. So we'll make sure we share that with all committee members as well, so you can have a look at that before we bring it here.
Thank you. Councillor Elliot.
Thank you, Gerry, for that really sobering report and also the photos. I went up to the Limbroke on Saturday and a bit behind Wurler Brook Hall just to remind myself of what we're dealing with. So I think it is really useful for people to see the images, to see the impact. And I was just showing Bernard the photos now. But what struck me from the report was the really depressing numbers, the scale of the problem. So just in terms of finances, I know you touched on it a little bit, but it's clearly like a corporate risk to the city and therefore the council. So how is that dealt with? Does each, because I know you said housing, if the trees are within housing, you manage it, but does that fall within their budget?
I'll take that question if that's okay. So yes, it's actually, this issue is now logged on the corporate risk register as a council-wide risk because of the magnitude of it and the costs involved. And we are looking at how we can try and mitigate that impact because currently the impact sits with Gerry Ruth and Parks and Countryside budget, but clearly it's not something that they can actually mitigate in any way. So we've got it on the corporate risk register and we are raising it at an executive level to see how we can help to mitigate that budget impact.
Thank you. That makes sense, doesn't it? Because obviously it wouldn't be fair for it just to fall on those departments. And just one more, if individuals ask us, is their funding available for them if they've got ash trees, for example?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. As far as I'm aware, there's been no funding available for ash dieback for anyone. I think because everyone's suffering it, I'm wondering whether that's why government isn't looking to fund, help fund. Authorities are probably saying, well, you're all in it together. One thing that I didn't pick up on the slides was the overall cost has been estimated for the UK has been estimated at £15 billion for Ash to deal with ash dieback. So it is, and I think probably you as well, Karen, you asked about whether anyone's lobbying the council for it. I would have thought that quite a few local authorities would have already done that as well as some of the bigger institutions like the Horticultural Association, but I can't say for sure. So we can be the first.
Okay, I think we've had a good set of questions. That paper was for noting and I think I speak for a sore when we say it's duly noted. And yeah, keep up the good work and it'd be interesting to get a report in due course. Thank you very much, thank you for your time. Karen.
Sorry, I made a point of saying, could we write as a committee to government and ask for funding? So I would like, as a committee, if we could do that. I mean, we'll probably not be successful, but we don't get if you don't try to do it. So just because we're unique at the number of trees we've got in Sheffield, that the council itself manages compared with other cities, I think that's quite a unique point to push.
I'd also like to comment that Sheffield being a green city is one of the reasons why so many people come and live here, study here, stay here. So I think on terms of how we're viewed as a city to the outside, I would second the idea of asking government for any assistance.
Okay, I'm more than happy to write on behalf of the committee to whoever you think is appropriate, unless anybody has any objections. Nope, so we won't do that. Thank you. Thank you for the suggestion. Our next item is item 10, which is the play zone update.
Apologies, pressed the wrong button. So Catherine Mudge, Service Manager within the Sport Leisure and Events Team. I have the, thank you Chair for the opportunity to bring the, an updated position on the play zones programme. So you will have received and heard from a paper back in November 2022, which noted detail on the play zones national programme, which I'll just give a brief overview for those that weren't in committee at that time. So play zones is a national programme funded by the Football Foundation, which is a national charity looking to improve provision and opportunity of football across the country. Play zones is an outdoor facility programme which looks at upgrading muggers or multi-use games areas in the country. So previously in the report, back in November, there was an update on our programme and our approach to the programme, which is a consortium approach across Sheffield, a consortium of key stakeholders in the city have come together to put an application to the Football Foundation for provision of play zones in Sheffield. The previous report noted an approach to how we would identify the sites across the city using a scoring matrix to identify sites where we would look to ideally place play zones to make as much benefit as possible to the local communities in Sheffield. Since, so this report simply outlines an update of our position from that and some of our findings from the work that's been undertaken over the last six months. The initial suggestion of a scoring matrix hasn't proved successful for us to be able to identify sites in the city. And there are a couple of reasons for that, which I'll try and summarise. In short, the fund of the Football Foundation have a set number of requirements in order for us to build said play zone, which is the outdoor facility. The facility has to be gated, so it has to have a gate all the way round, which is lockable. And there has to be an online booking system that we agree to utilise with any play zone site. Each play zone would also have to be floodlit, so it would have to have capacity to gain planning permission for floodlighting. Those three requirements in particular have made it very difficult for us to identify sites and we've taken, the team and I have taken the last six months to try to look at as many sites as possible across the city as to where we could look to utilise the facility. Our initial approach was to try and upgrade our slightly aging and existing muggers or multi-use game sites within parks and green spaces. And unfortunately, a number of those spaces have fallen down on some of those requirements that I've mentioned previously, most notably the one around being gated and bookable. We've done some consultation with over 70 different groups across the last six months, of which some of you have been involved in, so thank you for that. Where we've engaged with local stakeholders, asking the questions about replacing a publicly accessible space that anyone could go on for free of use and replacing it with a gated, bookable facility, actually that would detract rather than add value to the leisure offer in Sheffield. So for those reasons, what we're noting and wanting to propose for your approval today is a change in approach to a test and learn method. There are none of these that have been built nationally, so we are one of the first cities that are looking to put this in place. Therefore, there's a lack of learning and evidence on which either operating system or which site might work best across the country. So we were proposing to test a couple of different options for us to understand how the community can best engage with a site, what management operation needs to be in place and to ensure that residents of Sheffield make best use of said facility. The two sites that we're proposing to utilise in the first instance is one at Ecclesfield Park, which would be part of a larger master plan at that park. There's already some Section 106 and public health funding attributed to that, therefore... Therefore, that supports the match funding element that's required as part of this project. And the second site is a non-local authority site at Jubilee Sports Ground, which would be managed by Sheffield Wednesday Community Programme. They would operate the site, they would put the match funding up as well, so it would limit the financial risk to us as a council. And we would be able to observe the impact of having a managed site and whether that would be the best way forward to help the community engage better with a lockable, bookable facility. We would work with both sites, regardless of whether they were authority or non-local authority land, to develop a community activation plan. So we would, we would have to work with them to understand how much community usage would be in operation. We would also look and work with them about the possibility of having free usage for community members, so that we were still allowing for informal play that currently exists within our existing muggers. That summarises the report, so happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for that. I've got a number of people indicating to speak. I'll take Tony first.
Thank you, thank you for the report, very concise. What, what I'd like to ask is, and I know you've touched on it, where these sites will be gated and obviously charged for certain periods. And I think you've said that there will be free usage, is it, for children and probably disadvantaged people? Yeah, is that right?
Yeah, so there can be, so there's no, there's no stipulation from the funder about an amount or an expected cost, only that it's bookable and people would have to use what's called a smart access system, which is an online system to book the facility. That's a non-negotiable part of receiving the funding from the funder. But we as a, as a council would work with the facility to enable what's called an activation plan or a timetable, if you like, of usage. And therefore, we would negotiate some free usage perhaps in the day for young people or disadvantaged groups, absolutely.
And just, and just second the Chair. I noticed you said this, these were two pilot schemes that you're operating. But I've noticed they're both in the north of the city. Couldn't, we had one, one side of the city and one at the other, just a question, that's all. Thank you, Chair.
No, it's a perfectly good question, thank you. As I say, we've looked, in total, we've looked over 40 sites across the city trying to negotiate where, where we can replace the sites. In many cases, we've looked, we've looked at sites in each locality. And in, in most cases, there's either a lack of funds that we can find either through Section 106 or through SIL or through other public health funds. Or as I say, because of the current requirements from the Football Foundation, floodlighting particularly is one particular issue. The idea of this programme is to upgrade existing or in some cases, place new facilities. And so we need to ensure that it's got the infrastructure to enable that to happen. The idea of the test and learn is that what we're hoping is the evidence that we'll generate from that will help us inform the funder to suggest actually that there needs to be a more flexible opportunity moving forward. If we're going to reach the target audiences of which, which we would like to, we need a bit more flexibility in the programme, i.e. perhaps not having floodlighting where a site can't have it due to planning positions or removing some of the rigid lockable facility where we've got significant feedback that the community don't want to engage in a facility. But as it stands, those are requirements that we're having to work within. Hence, the selection of those two sites, as it stands, they're the best chance of us being able to trial something to learn the most.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Tony, could you turn your mic off, please? Okay, councillor Rice. And just before you start, sorry, did you indicate you wanted to speak, Bernard? No, okay, councillor Rice.
Thank you. Firstly, thank you for identifying Ecclesfield Park as a, as a prime place to hold the first phase. It's one, one thing that I've noted, talking to many of the residents, that it is a bit of a tired park and this would be very, very welcome in the local community. The, the foundation of my first point is engagement and how do we build a kind of a nebulous idea of community? Is there, was there any work that went in to try and reach people within the community, disadvantaged people in the community who aren't engaged in the current stakeholders that you have talked with? But then, once we have got it implemented and during the test and learn process, is there any, is there any strategy, any idea how we can really improve access to these communities? Prevent kind of siloing of, of communities and groups? So that we can start bringing people together, something which I feel like a lot of us have lost over these last three years of staying indoors?
Yeah, thank you. So we've designed, I have your survey that is going to be released on approval today with community members and with stakeholders. So that will go out to as many people as possible within, around the two locations in particular. And we'd look to use that method if and when further sites become available. We have a collection of stakeholders as identified in the report. There are others that we'd, we'd love to work with and will continue to identify. The next stage of this upon approval would be for us to produce an application to the Football Foundation. So it is still subject to approval from the Football Foundation as well. And as part of that process, we have to deliver a communications and community engagement plan, which sets out a series of conversations and listening with communities to identify exactly the requirements of that facility. So that's, that's within the, in the plans. Your second question, once hopefully there's, there's a play zone there, it's a case of absolutely identifying a range of different partners, not necessarily just sporting partners, but friends of groups, any TARA's in locality, other kind of community interest groups. But also looking at any other citywide groups. But there's a particular focus around improving access for disabilities and people living with either long-term health conditions or disabilities. So it's engagement with, with those groups to see how we can ensure a site feel welcoming and safe for that target audience as well.
Brilliant, thank you. Could I just ask when the survey is sent round? Could you forward it on to me via the Chair, just so I can hopefully assist in the engagement up in Ecclesfield? Thank you.
Lisa?
Thank you, Chair. Just like to add as well that we've actually had, it is in the report, but I just wanted to draw your attention to it, councillor Rice, that we in 2022 carried out a significant consultation on the sport, physical activity and leisure strategy. We're built on the back of that feedback, particularly from this, this piece of work to date with the people that we've spoken to. And that larger piece of consultation was that people want to exercise more outdoors in multi-use areas, not just in kind of grass or concrete or whatever. They want to be able to access the outdoors and that's really important to them. And also really important to them that they have free access to that as well in different, in different locations across the city. And that's why Catherine and the team have actually been challenging the Football Foundation around their quite prescriptive, the constraints that have been put in around play zones. And that's why we've gone back and challenged them and been able to get to a position where they will say, have a test in Sheffield, have a pilot and then come back and tell us and we'll actually change the parameters of the funding. So that, that consultation has absolutely informed that. So we'll, we'll definitely do more of that.
Thank you. I've got a couple more people who've indicated they'd like to ask a question or comment. I've councillor Elliot first and then councillor Hooper.
Thank you, Chair. Mine was just a comment, really. I see that in the play zones aims, terms are included like inclusive and accessible. But it's really clear that the stringent criteria set by the Football Foundation actually means that facilities provided under that model could actually be exclusive and not accessible for most people and actually take away free space. So I think it's indicative that no play zones have actually been built yet anywhere across the country. And it's right to formally today record that a change in approach is needed. And I just wanted to say thanks for your sort of dynamic approach to that and the testing and learning. And hopefully, you will be able to then negotiate some more flexible terms. And you know, thanks for challenging the Football Foundation on it. Because it would be good to benefit from the funding, but clearly not under this model. So thanks.
Yeah, thanks, sorry, Lisa. Was it, thank you, that's really kind to say and you're absolutely right. I think the, the challenge over the last six months has very, very much been reflecting what we're hearing from the community to inform a national funder to say, actually, we don't want a one-size-fits-all model and we want to deliver something that's right for the people of Sheffield and right for the communities that ultimately we serve. Which is why, as I say, we're pleased that the Football Foundation are open, having had lots of conversations with them to a test and learn model so that we can really listen to what, to what works well and what, or what doesn't work so well. So we can help inform not just for Sheffield, but ideally for nationally on the programme as well.
Thank you, councillor Hooper.
Thank, thank you, Chair, yeah. Thanks for the presentation, yeah. I think it was early April that we, certainly councillors in the north, had a presentation just, just blonket, which was very useful. Yeah, so that was good. I really welcome this, it's, it's really, really good. And I think if Phase One can be made successful, I'm sure it will be, that we can roll it out across the city. Albeit it's in Ecclesfield Park and in Clayworth Lane. It is accessible to, to other wards. And as regards match funding, I don't know how you're going on with that, but I would have a discussion with you. I'm Chair of the North Lake, so that covers Ecclesfield Park, yeah. And, and also Ecclesfield Parish Council, I know you've communicated with them, but that would be a source of involvement and perhaps some funding dependent. As regards lighting, the Ecclesfield Park is side where the old tennis courts are, aren't they? And I think it's perhaps only visible to the school's view properties, but the modern lighting is, is very good. And if there's a time limit on it and it's, they're not spreading to the universe now. They're focused on, on the particular activity, which should be really good. So I'm, I'm really pleased about it. As regards consultation, we could use the parish council again and the like. The North Lake, later on in this summer, we're going to do some more consultation. So perhaps we could use that as a focus. So we'll be out and about consulting, so it may help that as well. And we're not too far away from the Clayworth Lane side. So the Stanington and then the eastern West Ecclesfield was not too far away. But where they're situated, I think, and I'm not sure which lake it's in, I believe that the Hillsborough side, Clayworth Lane, is it in Hillsborough? And is it in that, in the north-east lake? Central, is it in central? Yeah, it's a strange area, that bit around there, yeah. It's in central. Yeah, no, no, I meant, I meant for the boundaries, the boundary, not even, not even. For the boundaries. So yeah, but it's, it's really good. And if Phase One's good, and I don't know how long Phase Two will, will take to come along, but is it envisaged that the schools will be able to book them during the daytime as well? Because there's one or two schools, and I think certainly around both sites, where there's not a lot of sort of leisure provision, not a lot of, you know, grassed areas, as you might say. That's same throughout parts of Sheffield, where that will be really useful for the, for the children. Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Little?
Thank you, Richard, and thank you very much for your presentation. Obviously, we've, we've hit a sort of a big issue here of availability of sites and accessibility. I'm just wondering if we've, have we in the past looked at refurbishing existing sites? Because I know they are very, very well used. I mean, you know, they're, you know, they're playing like 35 a side games of football with people in, you know, various shapes and sizes. But it's obviously, you know, really good fun and it's, you know, but it's less, maybe less expensive.
Yeah, so the, the, the main function of the programme is around refurbishing existing sites. The danger with, with that and the example that you've given is fantastic. If you've got a free open access, not particularly in great condition, but a usable space and we come along and put a great big gate round it and a lock on, it, it could have the position that actually we're taking away from a community rather than adding. And that's where we'd need to just be really careful with our approach to make sure that, yes, it, it could be a case of refurbishing that particular site that you're, that you're thinking of. But actually, we need to do that with real consideration and care to make sure that we don't become a problem, we don't cause a problem that actually wasn't already there. The, the ideal of the programme is yes, to refurb, because it is slightly cheaper than building from new, absolutely. But as I say, we just need to be, take care with considering those to make sure that we're adding value to a community as opposed to taking away an opportunity that they're, that they're accessing already.
I know, I, I know that, you know, the facilities that we've got locally in Upper Thork, for example, are, you know, very desperate need of, you know, just a new surface. So it's, it wouldn't be a huge outlay, as it were, or big construction. It's just something that is, is easy to kick a ball about on. Yeah, that's what we need urgently.
Yeah, we'd just add as well that the Parks and Countryside team and Ruth's team actually use the public health allocated money to try and improve the facilities in the areas that suffer health inequalities. I thought Upper Thork had had a resurface, so I will check that. But yeah, if it, we can, we can look at that within Ruth's team as well as in the Sport and Physical Activity team. So different ways that we can get funding, particularly for green and open spaces. So yeah, it's not just confined to the sport team.
If there's no other questions or comments, I'd just like to say thank you very much for your report. I think it's a very good way forward, as Alan has said. And let's hope that the Football Foundation are open to some learnings. There is a recommendation with this, and that is that the Communities Parks and Leisure Committee, one, notes the work undertaken since November and difficulties implementing the previously agreed approach to site selection. Two, endorses the approach now being proposed, including the phased application and the new methodology for site selection. Three, notes Phase One will be a test and learn process implemented at sites in Ecclesfields Park and Sheffield Wednesday Community Programme facility in the Jubilee Sports Ground. And finally, notes the findings from the test and learn process will be reported to this committee, Communities Parks and Leisure Committee, in due course. Are we all in agreement on that? That's noted unanimously, thank you very much again. The final item on our agenda today is an update on the task and finish group. And that will be Ruth Bell, thank you.
Thank you. I don't propose to talk at you for a very long time. You'll all recall that I came to the meeting in March with a proposal that a task and finish group be established to look at Sheffield's response to the nature emergency that had been declared the year before. It, it was agreed that one would be established, obviously after the election period. And some terms and refer, terms of reference were appended to that original report. So what I've done today is just provided a really short update report to you. Just letting you know, just reminding everybody of what it was that we agreed. I, I've once again appended the terms of reference. And really, I'm here to, to ask for two things, to be honest. The first is names for, for the task and finish group, because I know that you're all very keen to get started. And the other thing that I wanted to just check, because we've had a few conversations about this, was the, the makeup of the, of the task and finish group. In the terms of reference that were originally proposed, it suggested a two-two-one makeup, which was political representation. And I know that a couple of conversations have happened, have happened outside of this committee about whether or not that is the way that you want to go. I wanted to let everybody know that I've spoken to other people who are on other committees about what's happened in other task and finish groups. Because I, I know that you don't want to set any precedents or cause any issues for future task and finish groups. And I can confirm that And I can confirm that task and finish groups have happened with a couple of other committees, and there's been a real mix. There have been some that have been politically representative and some that haven't. So you can make a decision based on what you want for this task and finish group. That's all I'm proposing to say, if that's all right.
Okay, I did, I was aware of this and I did look at the webcam for the March meeting. And in fact, the terms of reference as they were were unanimously passed. But I do also, I am aware that that will be two-two and one. I know, for example, the councillor Little would like to be on it. In order for that to achieve, because we did agree, I think there would have to be a formal proposal and second for that to make it two-two and two.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for bringing that up. I did note that the terms of reference were agreed back in March when we had a different committee. But I'm happy to acknowledge the fact that the two-two-two formation for this particular task and finish group has been discussed previously. And to say, from my point of view, we're happy to accept that for this particular group, we'd just like to ask that it's noted that we would undertake to revisit this for each and other, you know, future task and finish groups or other working groups in future, so that we're not either hampering ourselves or other committees by setting any sort of precedent. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Rice.
Can I just ask for a clarification? There's no decision-making ability by the task and finish group. Am I correct in thinking this?
That's right, yeah, it's a working group, it's not a decision-making body.
With that, I'm happy for, at least for myself, to agree to the two-two-two, because it will have to come back to a proportional committee for any decision to be made.
Sorry, I should have said that, yeah. Any decisions that are recommended would come back here for your approval as a political decision-making body.
On that basis then, do we actually need to have a formal vote or can we just agree?
I think it's probably taken as the same thing, but it would be neat to just have a formal proposal, second or the vote, Chair.
Do we have a formal?
Can I formally propose then that it's two-two-two? Yes, two-two-two.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Can I take silence as agreement? That's fairly silent, thank you very much. We do have a couple of other things though, as first mentioned, we need to have the nominations or... So I assume that you're both wanting to do it? We are nominating Alan Hooper and Rob Bryce and...
Chair, could I come back quickly on that, because we need to consult about availability, as do, you know, when people... Do we have a date or a timescale for this at all yet?
Not yet, but what I'll do is straight after this meeting, I'll get in touch with the agreed people and all of yourselves so that we can try and get it sorted as soon as possible.
Right, so it could be me plus a N other.
Thank you very much. councillor Hooper.
Yeah, rather than dragging this on once we've met, could we have this as an agenda item on the September meeting, please?
Because I think, reading the minutes, we did originally say this was going to be concluded on the 16th of June, which I think is pushing it a bit. And I was tasked to come up with a separate date. But if we bring this, if you can work to the principle that you have to report back at the next committee meeting, which is, I believe, is the 18th of September, does that work for everyone? Great, thank you. And with that, I would like to say thank you for today, thank you for your attendance, thank you for the officer presentations, even yours, Gerry. And if I don't see you, but I probably will, have a great summer and see you in September. Thank you.